Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Yeah.
And a lot of the people on the video were at, were at it.
That's good.
Yeah.
Future.
Yeah.
I mean, that should be.
Right.
I remember the three days should have been like together.
Because I wasn't sure.
Now we have my business.
It's not changing.
So it was very cool.
Sure.
Oh, she, did she find that out?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, I know where it's at. I can easily do it.
Yeah.
He was really very, very playing later on.
It was that nice.
It was good.
Unfortunately, the, you know, the gym, oh geez, okay. Mine just went blank.
Uh-oh.
Yeah.
Did you charge it?
Yes.
That would be my problem.
It says, wait till we install a system update. I can't. Yeah, because the first time that, that I'm supposed to read them, this happened, and I thought this is not gonna happen. Right. It just, I was kind of feel like door, trying to figure out where I want.
Oh, I, I'll leave a link for you.
Yeah.
Okay.
We've been about.
The chart is on the top.
Do you want me to bring it in too?
Was she no place now or was she, she was? Where's it going?
Um, it says, please wait until we install a system update.
What is that?
Do you have the agenda?
I, um.
I've got another one.
No.
Okay.
I think she'll.
Yeah, no, I didn't. Um, that works.
Ready to roll everybody. No.
I will. She's gonna get me.
I've read.
Which was.
She could.
This was gonna happen. I'm gonna do that. Yeah, so we did that with him. He's gonna have one too, so I'm trying to get everybody to do one of those. I'll swap this up.
Of course. Want her to go to the back. A little bit earlier.
Good. I love it. I love the future rebound. I just. Okay. And that's what that is.
That's it?
Okay, so.
Okay.
Yeah, man. Yeah. Yeah. Driving the traffic. People too now. Maybe all day. We didn't do it already. All right, with all the July 11, 2022 meeting to order, the regular session of the Cascade School District Board of Directors will now convene in the High School Library and via Zoom. The laws governing boards of education require that their work be done with the public and observe their actions. Please remember that this is the board's meeting for the public to observe. Others may participate only with the approval of the board. Let's rise with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and just as well. Okay. One, B is both of office. You have said both of office. Aaron has it. Aaron.
I have a.
Okay.
The oath of office.
Okay.
My ear and lead do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States of America, and the laws therefore are thereof, and the policies of the Cascade School District. During my term, I will faithfully and impartially discharge the responsibilities of the Office of Board of Educational School Board Member to the best of my ability.
Okay. You're good? Next.
Welcome.
Welcome indeed. Am I signed?
Yeah.
All right, next is the election of chair.
I think the nomination and chair.
I will send that motion. Do we do it now, or do we elect it at the end? Sure. Cheryl, we need to move in second now on the chair. All right, it's been moved and seconded for Chair Ramsay to be Chair of the Board. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Election of vice chair.
I would like to make a motion to nominate Brett Stiegel as our vice chair. Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to nominate Brett Stiegel as vice chair. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, so do we pass the torch now, Cheryl, or do we?
Pass the torch.
The torch is yours.
Yay. Okay. B. I don't know. I'm at the Google. Okay. No, there's a guest list.
There's a guest list.
Oh, there's visitors' guest list. If everybody could please sign that, that would be great. And then two, approval of minutes from June 13th, regular board meeting and work session minutes. I, wait, can I interject? Yep, it's the, it's the board meeting and hearing minutes. What's a hearing minutes? Okay. All right, okay. I, I want to approve the approval of minutes and the hearing minutes.
A second motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the regular board minutes and the hearing minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Prioritize agenda, Mr. Grill.
Thank you for listening. It goes through your list. Personally, I won't take it.
P. D. O. S. Then you are up with the oral report, Mr. Grill.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to July, and it should be quiet. And just pretty busy working on a number of. I think it's one or two across. I heard somebody. First and foremost, seismic events, you saw coming in, the junior high is working on seismic risks. I would say definitely it's on budget, thanks to Tom, keep it true, keeping track of things, and we're probably 95% on time. So far, so good, and 1% a week late. They showed up, they didn't show up last week, so they're back this week, and it's Thursday. So they'll move quickly. We had Scott talk to some people. We also had Tom out there making sure that they were going to keep on time. He did a couple of products, so we're in a good place. The only thing that they really talked, that was a bit of a surprise, was that we're surprised that we're meeting in the home ec room, which it kind of felt might be, but it ended up being not quite as bad as they suspected. So it feels like we should be on track to keep on time. Obviously, our goal, have it done so that our junior high teachers can, and we're able to start school more time. Cloverdale. Now, the Cloverdale construction, for just over $100,000, we took a look at adding a fourth classroom, fourth prefabricated building. I almost got it ready. Uh, so, and we're gonna go ahead and do that. The price was really good after we left it and done it separately. We were looking at the two of 250, 275. Be able to reach the crane to the middle of where that, that older modular was and pull it out. We were in a good place financially. We provided that, we're able to pull those two out, and we know that at some point, Cloverdale will need to have the front and the second modular taking care of their, our better ship, however it becomes. So that seems to be on time. The work around taking care of all stuff on the ground is ready to go. They're just waiting on. There. Third piece is heat max. Tom and I went to the city of Onsville last week. We met with the city of Onsville about the Delmar Street construction. That street is just in the south of Onsville Elementary. At the moment, right, so it's a, it's a street that's wide, and then it gets smaller, and then it gets even smaller, and there are four houses that run, particularly that face outward where buses come in. The city has sold the property across the street from Onsville Elementary. It has been purchased by a fellow who plans on putting single family law homes there. That big used small land across from Onsville and then kind of around in a hollow shaped fashion going south down behind some other homes that were built 15 years ago. Those two areas are going to be developed over time. The city wants to push Delmar through, so it'll run from first to the all way through the other. We drive around within 30 minutes of the city, second, I'm with Tom and I. And I think mostly it was a good productive conversation. I would say it first, that's why it'd be a little tense. They included a junior, we had a number of the plans already drawn up. It's just really the first time. Cascade School District had already viewed that. Their goal is to widen the road. The city of Onsville believes that some of our properties inside of their, I think it's access, but their easement rights. So what they want to do is move the chain like fence closer to our school, build roads through there. That also means that, that because they see it now, it will eliminate the driveway when the buses all just drive into Onsville. Turn downhill more and then turn left. They also find this would be really good for us. So I'm, I'm always fascinated by when people tell me that. I'm a little bit nervous about what that means. So we listened, we took a number of notes, we asked a number of questions. I would say that the, the architect did a really good job of saying, yes, we can manage that kind of thing, if necessary, we can help. One of the things they did talk about is we have that 65 foot long, 25, 30 foot wide shed, and we use a radius for our students. They suggested that they would do that for. They're done to make this happen, so we're gonna take a look at that. We also decided that, Tom and I decided that on our way back, that we would contact land use attorney while we're asleep. And so we had engaged an employee that should need to look over the deed and make sure that everything that the city talked to us about was exactly as it should be. Keep working on that now. Mr. Lee and Tom and I met this morning over there and kind of walked that property line. He has some questions that he wants to get answers to. Also going to send a letter on behalf of the district to the city of Onsville, asking for their plans and their processes. So I will keep you all informed. If any of you are interested in the process, feel free to get ahold of me, talk to me about it. I'm still learning as well as I go. On one side of the coin, moving that, moving that large shed and giving up some property is always a moving concern. On the other side, they're going to pay for everything. They're gonna widen that road, which is what they're going to do to run through the Delmar, and then, you know, with part of that road to be a drop off point, we talked about the state. We'll need to take a look at what that looks like. I'm not sure if their comment about, if we ever go out for a party, if we don't get this done, we would have to pay for some kind of culture. If that came across. I wanted to say it came across to me as a, as a thoughtful piece of information. It came across to Tom a little more as a cause of threat. All this, that he may end up having to pay for this down the line. It was at that moment, the first 10 minutes, I thought maybe we're gonna get even turned sideways, but we moved in the right direction, and we got everybody back on track, and it became a productive meeting. So we will need to. That, see exactly how that goes. And Mr. Lee will give us some information. For those of you who may not remember, Wally Lee was the first person that represented a number of our citizens in our district a few years back when they were trying to put the M drawing facility in. And he was the one that really put the tie box on that thing. So I feel good about it. He's got 43 years land use planning. Happens in our area, helped a number of our residents over time. And then finally, the last piece I've got is the safety, locked doors with buzzers at the foot border. We have that stuff we have that today. Those will be for the elementary schools, for elementary schools, both the K-2 and K-5, Onsville Turner, along with the alternative school, where we have brand new doors that have a buzzer from an office camera. So you can possibly go in, the doors are blocked. Like, shut. After that, we will continue to look at fencing, cameras, and other safety measures which are being reviewed over a period of time. So for example, at Turner, we want more fencing, but we also know that the pool house is going to get demolished, and they're gonna build a new pool house that Tom had his hand in with the city of Turner. So we're gonna kind of wait till they get that done before we finish the fencing along the way. Otherwise, we built fencing, they turn around, probably have to take some of it out to turn around and deal with that. Kind of waiting for the city to order, make sure we're looking at the front. The other thing that happened is that, maybe you didn't notice, that was a great job, and they'll check again, but it was 20 hits, over 20,000. I'm not thinking 20,000.
20,000, hearing, people, uh, starting, the SWAT team. Let's get going. From the training.
Right. The person on social media, we have Mary County SWAT here and there, in the process of doing that. Very challenging. So every secretary squad. But they came this morning, they did exercise in this building, walked all three of the buildings and walked the junior high, and they are going to send the Jackson representation. So there were 15 to 20 people here today. They do different parts of their SWAT at different times, and they all集结 together. There's a gentleman here from Auburn, all the way down to Jefferson, and a kid. Parks is new. So. Those.
I was excited to see that. I thought I'm Mary County. We tried it and they shared it.
Right. Questions about that?
Okay, so when you're talking about the fencing, it's gonna go, so the buzzer system, they have to, they have to press a button, and then they're, they're, they can't go in until they're scared by the secretary, if ever sort of run that. Okay, so then the modular is down behind Turner. Is that what you're talking about, the fencing right there?
Once, when Turner might have to continue to, on the older, and pass the.
Okay.
And that way, the whole front, it will be fenced.
And it's like going to happen before school starts?
Without the fencing, I don't know. We'll take a look at the fencing. I believe though, what the city of Turner is planning to do with that building. It demolished the old pool house and just confine their work to there, and it might be a place to go ahead and do the fencing. But it also means we need to finalize fencing at Cloverdale. We also need to finalize fencing at Onsville to make sure that we've got the fence correct. And obviously, we're gonna need help from fire bureaus to make sure that we are not doing anything to prevent them from getting to us. Right, this is preventing people from being in. We also need to make sure that our fire folks are taking, we're okay. How they can kind of fence it, we're working ways to back out. But working it down as well. Balance, probably will work on that. We're feeling good. Yeah.
Okay, also, when the in-service starts again in August, is there a plan during the teacher in-service, moving into the first couple of weeks of school, on what to do if there's a shooter in the building?
So we've had a plan before. We talked about a plan before. There were first. Going back through that. Before we have our management. Okay, go through, okay, what is the thing? So we need to talk about. What kind of ways to block doors here from the. Right, when you get to the point where you're walking down hallways of the buildings. After the shooting, all day, yeah, everybody was ready to do that. Doors being propped open, this is one day, it's a cold day, I don't have heat. Other doors, you know, you're asking the teacher, third doors, they have those sliding things, all they have to do with emergency, they'll pull that shut. We're looking at that. We also know that Mary County today, the US. We'll get that information, bring it back, the Tom administration will come talk to you, and then we'll. Onsville Fire Police, Turner Fire Police, and Mary County Fire Police. Are okay. So we are talking about maybe should the clients save.
Right, they have the capital plan, and the teacher all have to be on the same page. Because I know years ago, when this all started, it was always to hunker down in your classroom, hide in your classroom. Now, the new theory seems to be to give out, and, but they're still, you know.
It goes back and forth.
You talk to different teachers, and they're doing different things. They're, they're not on the same page.
They're not on the same page. I would also suggest that we kind of talked a number of times about safety. We've got to work with those. That's what we're gonna hope at, right? We'll talk amongst each other. That's something that's. You agree to this, what it is, sign something to do. And, well, which is a really very good about, where it lands, one of the thoughts come up, right? Really good about that. Middle school, okay. High school, not so much. I want to learn. Okay, well, like the guy said today from Marion County, you know, lanyard's a pretty important thing. You know, immediately if you're building, if it's anybody for lanyard, we're probably not going to engage that first. If it's without a lanyard, we're gonna think twice. And it wasn't the guys today from Marion County, but it was those guys in the past that we talked to, and their response is, we take care of situations first, and we ask questions second. So, you know, make sure that our administrators are very clear of their building, folks, that case is one.
Exactly.
This is not something that's a choice. We're gonna need to work on that.
So as a guest coming into a building, then we report to the office, we should be picking on lanyards, if there are any bodies.
There is a case of that, or some sort of thing, like citizen, I just, we have that, remember about, what is it?
Right.
So we're gonna work on that.
Okay, and so when we make the call, who responds here?
That's a very good question. It depends on the building you're talking about, right, and what the timing is. So Mary County. If they have, they have. We'll find the way. First, Turner and on, so also first one as well. They'll get that. Has that process changed? Until we solve them, Mary County can back up. From that, we all ask the process to. For Cloverdale, or in the old school. How does that? Told in the past, yes, Marion County will respond, but not. They could call one of their local, to make sure that they can. But we are talking about some events. There's no question that we trade off, we're having such a wonderful space out here, we trade off for response time. I know if we got a flyer, Turner is here. Wait, we. Have a 911 call, or if you have an epic episode, or we got something, they are pretty quick. So we know that's the case, but on, they respond quickly, it's obvious. I know PD there on does that well, so we need to make sure we know exactly what that process is.
You know, you do, because in my mind. Turner knows what, that they do not have the police resources to raise the amount of shooter in the building, in my opinion. They would have to call for help to come, because then isn't Turner just a one or two. Or.
Hey, don't.
Two and bringing on the third.
Right.
But it's still one person.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Onsville's best. And.
Not enough. Yeah.
No, but like, like I had a conversation. Oh, neither is I. So that's kind of. One. You guys moved in.
It's on my mind all the time, and I didn't bring it up the last meeting because it wasn't the right time that it's done.
I was just gonna, actually, like, yeah. Um, cheers. About the new.
And all of the schools. Ask. I'm a veteran, a chief of order. On the purpose here. After signing, they have the. As a. The maker. They part. And then require them to check out. Okay, so, and we have the. So the minister. Great off the list. I have a real. There's an app. But this is a lot of chairs.
Yeah, and I can, I can attest, I used it, it was pretty simple and straightforward. Name it, print it out.
Pretty slick.
Someone would you say that all the volunteers that are very regular, very, very regular, are they going through that motion every time? Or some of them skipping it because they're here so often?
I would say there's probably. There's probably one school where I think they have some issues with volunteers. To be in, finding it.
Because they're just, they get a little too familiar, perhaps?
Because it's easy to go into a building and bypass the office.
Right.
Whereas, all of your other schools, you're pretty much walking into the building.
Walk through the office.
Into the office. Where people.
Right.
The ones.
Which leaves me to believe it's Overdale, because that office is a little out of the way, if you will. And so perhaps the volunteer gets a little familiar and just, hey, I'll just go straight to class, I'm going to be in. Okay, so it's an easy fix.
Yes.
It's an.
Right, it's like everything, we just need to.
Right, right, and Brian knows. And he's had conversations with, you know, those volunteers that are coming.
And I'm sure they don't mean any harm, they're just making life simple.
Right, exactly, exactly. But, yeah.
Because I'm sorry, I'm so sorry, but I just, this one thing that's on my mind. Because I know you'll probably run this and make sure that the, the in-services are happening and all of this, but. Compared to what they do in the elementary school, because the students are switching classes in the junior high and high school. That wherever they have their practice tape and practice period of like a shooter in the building, could be so different if they were in a different, you know, place on campus. And I know that with my kids in the gym, I used to go over what we would do in those situations with every class period. So kids knew if they were in the gym, it's way different than if they're in science, you know what I'm saying? So maybe when you're talking to the teachers or administrators, whatever, you're getting ready for these plans down the road. But you bring that up, that every teacher should talk to every class about what they would do in certain situations. Because you don't want the door to open and then they all, they just scatter.
Right.
So, yeah, we can talk about that. Sure, to make sure that they, they have. Yeah, they don't, they don't have to practice every period, but they just have that talk and.
Right.
You know, like, one big thing that used to be a problem, teaching girls PE is if something scared them, what did they do? They would scream. Well, if we're trying to hide down in the locker room and you've got, I've got forty screaming girls, so we would practice not screaming. And doing, you know, we, we would, and it wasn't on any plan or agenda, but we were prepared because. You know, I was always worried that if somebody came into the building, we would go to the most crowded spot on campus, which is the gym.
Other question. Just to clarify on the buzzing in and the cameras, you said that's for sure happening in all the schools?
Elementarys and the alternative school right now, that was what we agreed to. Which we can do this campus. We need to add more, one of the reasons why SWAT was going to get recommendations. Because this campus. Comment to me today was. This is a difficult campus. From the safety perspective.
Yeah.
And I said, yes, it is. But they kept opening doors, walking to another.
Okay.
So we are going to get more recommendations by what I imagine that would happen on this campus. Number of doors on the outside of the handles are going to go like. Right, so they're going to make it so that there's going to be specific points of entry. And that's one of the few things that we started with pretty, pretty quickly, more cameras. And with regard to. More lock situation, is it something else? The problem with our campus here is that not only do our high school kids go from that building to that building. Our junior high kids go from this building to that building, to that building. And even over to that building, so there's a, it's a campus-wide.
And so. Up front, is there's going to be a camera and the buzzer for the front door? None of the other exterior doors are going to have cameras or buzzers or anything? Right.
So the elementary since then.
As far as the camera and the buzzer is just going to be for that front door to see who's coming in.
Am I, or are we doing more cameras than other places? You already put a number of chambers in a number of places at the elementary, right?
We have, we're adding some, we're adding them at the elementary's as we get them in, and then we're doing a whole reexpression on the main campus this summer.
And then, who's going to be able to watch those cameras? Like, is, is it going to be a multi-screen or the front desk lady?
Right now, the administrators have access and then we do have cameras in the front desk. So you can buzz somebody in, or they do have the monitors up there.
Okay.
Yeah, so they can see.
Yes, they can actually see what's going on.
Exactly.
Because not somebody somewhere maybe watching.
Exactly, yeah.
Anything else? Ten seconds. Okay.
Well, we have some pretty good news. Twenty percent reconcile for the year. This time of year is really important to the fiscal office. We're glad that everybody had a successful year. A lot of. Yeah, grants and, and final year purchases and so forth. What we've seen, your financial reporter is the general fund, of course, which is our largest fund. But this is also the fund that's also reflecting of all of the resolutions that he made to last year. Which was the current, here's the always referred to as. Budget, so you can see our, our final, our estimated final lending fund balance is, is going to be stronger than we expected. It's a good solid number, and that's good for us starting next year. Two hundred thousand dollars more than we were expecting. I think that number is going to hold, this is a very preliminary figure, like I said, we're probably about twenty percent done. It'll get tightened up a little bit by through next quarter. But that's all I have for that, unless there was any questions on the financial. The, Mr. Gill kind of stole a little bit of thunder on the. Oh, no, sorry, of the seismic ramp, and it is going quite well, actually. Paul Tom and I are very happy. Contractor, and this is the second year that we've worked with the engineering group at W R K and some other. We had meetings in person with the project director, the head of the construction company, the head of W R K, the engineering company, plus the project engineer, plus combined weekly in the junior high. And that conversation is a very good conversation. We are, as Mr. Gill said, we are a little bit behind, probably a week, week to ten days on the roof. There isn't a lot of, you know, sometimes in projects, things. So we're, we're qualified, but once again, the roof gets done. We don't have a lot of things, we're just waiting for that. Or we're actually ahead of the schedule in terms of the bracing and tactics. So things are going well so far from a financial standpoint. I haven't seen anything scary yet. Finish this project on time.
The portion of roof that's off on the junior high.
Uh huh.
Did we find any, like, dry rock damage or anything like that? As we are looking for that as well as what we're doing.
We actually, when we, yeah, if there are, is, if there are any dry rock damage things, it's actually fine because we have to remove those. We have to do, we have to replace the decking that had any kind of damage in that, right? Because what we're doing, if you remember in these projects, we tighten everything down, we're hugging that building tight. Which is what makes it stronger. So, yeah, as we pull that off, if there's anything that looks like. Both they, just replace it, and then we actually concentrate on different building patterns that hold the existing decking, decking, if it's strong enough. Hold that down.
Will it be metal roof to go back on?
It's not, you know, no, we, yeah, we went with composite, yeah, I forgot, we had to change back and forth now, at the, kind of at the last minute. Mostly because of cost, there's three D roofing types, and we went with the, kind of the sealed roofing material. Which would actually have some good success at that. You know, if you remember, we removed that.
Right.
We were all kind of wondering about that. But since we replaced the roof. I mean roofs in Oregon, particularly in West.
And we're going to put a nice flat roof on it?
Yeah, that would probably be a good idea, we could build up the edges all around. And then finally, the last thing I had to report is we hired a grant analyst, she started today, Katie Papelmeier. She is a low home parent, she has a student who's going to be a sixth grader, and another who's a sophomore here at the high school. She lived in Overdale, she's a Overdale IA for a few years. Has been kind of the stay-at-home mom, but has an MBA in healthcare. Comes with some good credentials, and she's been a pleasure to work with. And a therapist, a couple of times, obviously, in the process, so we're very happy to have her going in our team. Their first grand draw preparation today. We're well on our way to utilizing her skills. And it's all experience that really is happening.
Is, is her main objective to, like you just said, to get caught up with the stuff we have, or to find new opportunities?
Actually, Paul, you know, a couple of years ago, when I was presenting some goals here, you know, we were, we had foreseen a transition as all schools are tapped. In terms of like looking at grants, the availability of grants that are targeted to really assist schools. Rather than, you know, just kind of accepting every grant that comes to the door. The best practice is to kind of figure out which direction we want to head, see funding to build that direction, right? And so my, the emphasis in this particular position was somebody that understood the financial side in order to, you know, help with the drawdowns and getting all the processing and the reports up and all of that kind of stuff. But also work with administrators, staff, teachers, community leaders, that kind of thing, too, where you should go out and do the right. I've got a bit of a background in that, unfortunately, I should get the right photographs. But, you know, it's, it's, it's a big job. People or organizations pay a lot of money for a good grant buyer. And, and so, we're not quite at that level yet, like, to help, let us see this, we know that. It's here, so, but we're walking down the path. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, by a personal hire recommendation.
I'm kind of weighing down our hiring, if I have. And then improve some coach positions. Let me fill. So I have a few hires, Zach Mencer, principal at Almstil. Jacob Sumnerby, special education basic skills teacher at the junior high. And Desiree Bear, a special education teacher. That will be serving Turner and Overdale students.
How many do we need normally? You said we have fifteen openings right now? Man, it's hasn't been normal for a few years, but what do you usually have, or would you like to have at this time? Fifteen, wouldn't you? Yeah, I set myself up.
Um. Probably just a couple is what I would like to see, and whenever we get to this point in the year, if we have a focus on things. It's a little worrisome.
Right.
Because now we're.
We can already see the finish line. Or the starting line, whatever you want to call it.
Right, now, we have not hired years many people as we did last year. We were upwards of eighty people last year. Yeah, yeah, and we're probably at about twenty-five total.
Is that because we retained a lot of those eighty?
Yeah.
What's unusual too, with the area that's around us. By time at seaside. The number of district. Eighty. One, a couple of things happened, one, we didn't have as many. Two, our pools have been pretty decent. It's fine because of our reputation. Listening to others, if they are struggling. We feel pretty good about it, the hard part is we get a late reservation. Right, we're the money at the moment. The fast ones are gone.
Sure.
So then we can. Find some diamonds.
Right. Got it, okay.
Scott, of the numbers that you're looking at, the jobs that you're looking at, how many of those are teachers?
Oh, I'm trying to. Scattered throughout the district, or are these, they're all very lucky. And they probably five, we've got to be up a special position at the high school, because so many of them will be a PE teacher.
Looking for a PE teacher because when we signed, or because we're adding?
We're adding.
Good.
Yes.
Just fly. Which will allow us more at Turner.
So that, that should bump us up to three times a week? Everyone has it three times a week, because we're thirty at two right now.
We'll be close.
Okay, yeah. Awesome.
One of those levels where I don't necessarily. That way, as. Something else, I see a cross as the same, all specials. My goal is to. The continuing status of contractors is matched by the number of pents that teachers are required to have for preparation.
Is there any way to add more music?
It could be, it's just why this we're going to add. Because there is a city law, and as we push it on the road, it's about how you want it to happen.
Yeah.
Right, but I do have some people that are helping.
This, this could be a complicated question, so we'll lay down it, but is there a plan B if you don't get those positions filled for the beginning of the school year? Or like, I, I guess, what would that look like if there's an empty position and nobody to fill it when school starts?
The one I'm concerned about is the.
That's a specific person.
Are the hired folks that are not quite finished getting their special education? Apportenture. Beginning of thirty-three thousand dollars. To help those people, we've hired a couple of classified people that are working on getting their MAT. And we can provide them with not only people support mentors, but also. Make them stay. Which is the whole point of the potential credit, so.
We have, we have one ability, just that hiring anybody that's not better. If you're the right person, so. Do it, we, once in a while, we start the stuff.
I think I would agree with that, I think that's the right choice, I know that you get the right person and just have a warm body in a position.
I understand, we, it was a week ago, we hired somebody, she pretty much, I think, talked to, talking to.
Yeah, we've had a couple of people that work for us as a classified staff member, and we're just like, maybe we can write in a special education classroom. They're willing to prepare, be great in, to help support that. Kat Lee is really good at problem solving, so I know that if you don't find somebody to fill that high school position, she will fill it with plenty. Hopefully get out, in a comprehensive classroom. Sometimes it's on the app kids, whether teachers, and maybe having to get them an extra cycle or managing extra case loads. Sometimes we kind of that way, like the board group part in, a substitute and put in somebody. Any questions?
We're actually waiting for the one.
Thanks for so much speaking, Scott. I mean, there's something. This is a freshman American international school. I'm just gonna ask all the team.
Can you answer the question?
Is it all going to drive? No, it's new.
Take your own trip to France for you every couple of years?
As the director of marketing.
I agree.
Well, they just say, because you're a private school, like after school, I think, people, they do sort of flying. And it's trying to sort of scoop the mind, it's like.
Well, you've done an amazing job for us. We have come leaps and bounds from where we were by far. And the last newsletter I brought in, I forgot, that I just wrote very nicely, then I'm on it the other night there. So, I appreciate, and we all appreciate what you've done and built for us. And you are going to be very difficult to frequent. That is not true.
Yeah, the job is posted.
The job is posted.
And I'm trusting, I'm, I'm writing out, who do you know?
Exactly, bring some friends in.
Trying to follow some people on the way, so perfect, yeah.
Well, think about us once in a while, but you're drinking that wine and. We'll be happy for you.
Congratulations.
Congrats, thank you very much. Okay, moving on, by point B, out-of-state trip request for National Honor Society?
So, as per our policy, right, if they go out of state, they have trip requests to you guys. We've seen a lot of these due to Trump, but we think, well, the last couple we saw, like last month, they're like, oh yeah, by the way, we. Cheryl's done a good job of tracking people, we need to find out. Mr. McBeth for the National Honor Society, they're headed to, they picked a lot of mine during our last three years, haven't had a chance to go before. So they're headed to Seattle, Education Center, also has some talent, along with a couple of other teachers and a couple of parents. They're going together as a group. Ironically, they're finding it difficult to find a hotel, right? Because most hotels are like, well, we need somebody in each room, and these are twenty-five or older. And we're like, no, we really don't need a hotel, we have three students. So it becomes an interesting concept of them trying to figure out what that looks like. Travel part is going to become more difficult unless it's filled with the travel to a company. So, but Mr. McBeth is working on it, people can pick up two guys tonight. I totally support what he's trying to accomplish.
I wonder, just that, you know, if you could get in touch with the school, if they're able to house, and schools or something like that?
About as well, all of the concerns that race through my mind about how that works.
Oh, I know.
I know, so, he's working on it, he and I said we'd talk a little bit more about that, so. Also, we can talk to Pete as well.
Okay. Great, any questions? Okay, six point O information on item six A, staff handbook.
So, I included in your packets, the revised twenty-two coming from the staff. I don't know, here, I did information from OSBA that tells me, and this was a policy change. You need to make sure that, why would you need that handbook, management policy, this is what we recommend, this is what we require. So the handbook in here is one that includes all of the changes. You'll see the strike throughs for language that is being removed, and the underlined language is language that's being added. Really nothing earth-shattering. In the staff handbook, do you guys have any questions?
Privately, I have a number of questions.
All right, go for it.
All right, which page do you want to start on?
Whichever page you want to start.
All right, we'll start on the, it's page, I don't know what page it is, it just says page one, but it's the, the staff operation. It's like the sixth page in, maybe. Staff operation, we talked about accident incident reports. Is it possible to put in something to the effect of, or would we consider requiring any injury that requires hospitalization or admittance to a hospital to be drug and alcohol tested? Can we ask that or require that? And here's why, workers' comp is an issue when somebody's admitted to the hospital. Workers' comp doesn't automatically blood test, but if someone's under the influence of drugs or alcohol when they're injured, it's excluded from workers' comp, so meaning their, their, their comp claim will be denied.
Right.
And if we mandatory test every person for drug and alcohol upon injury, if they're under the influence, it's not a problem.
I think we would have to have policy.
I do too, but I think it'd be worth looking into.
And I, we can check with.
Right, but I agree, I think it'd be a policy issue, or, or, you know, a union type thing, but I think it'd be worth asking and seeing if we can get that put into a, a contract, because it would be in the district's best interest if we. And the problem with that is you have to have everybody do it. There's no, well, they're okay, we don't have to know. It's a cross, it's a hard line.
Right.
Everyone, and we have to pay for it, but it would be worse in the long run, should somebody be under the influence. It's not a problem.
Right.
Might be worth looking into.
Okay.
That's one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Don't know that I can get it changed for this year, but we certainly. Looking into it.
Okay, the next, my, my next part is actually page two, or the next page behind that.
Okay.
Okay, there's two things on that page, one is animals in district facilities. This one says only service animals are allowed, blah, 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 no exceptions. I think we either need to scratch that completely, or we need to stand behind it. We turn a blind eye to dogs on campus, we all know that, it's not a secret, we just do it. And so we either need to scratch that and get it out of there and stop pretending, or we need to stand behind it.
So that is taking direct reference in policy, so that is, that is our district policy.
Right, I understand that, but we're turning a blind eye to it, and we all know that. And it sets precedence if we turn a blind eye to that. What, what do we enforce and what do we not enforce? Because we're actively not enforcing that, therefore, can we not actively enforce the other ones?
Can you give me a second?
Sure, were you at graduation this year?
No.
There were multiple dogs sitting out in the field, the four of us all stood there and looked at them, everybody saw them, nobody cared.
Actually, we had two vice presidents talk, three of the four.
Okay, all right, well, thank you, I appreciate that, I was not aware.
Yeah.
So, I appreciate that, I stand corrected, thank you. But we've got, we've got dogs all the time.
Yeah, there is, and we, we need, so during the school day, if we have an employee who needs to have an animal, it has to be designated service animal.
I understand, I'm talking, my parents, their dogs crapping out on the lawn, and it's like, you know, it, it happens. And, and one of them was, frankly, one of the dogs at the, at the graduation, that were there. Um, and it was just interesting how, yes, we just let it slide, what else are we going to let slide? So that was my thought is, if we're going to let stuff slide, then let's get rid of it, because we're setting precedence by now. Um, the other one on that same page is right below where it says breaks, and it's in red on this one, where it says employees who work more than, oh, now I can't see it, six or more consecutive hours, that's thirty-minute meal. Did we take that out, that line out, because it's red line?
No, it's not.
Oh, it's added. Yeah, it's added, so can I?
They've always gotten that.
Right, can I make a suggestion to that? Only, my understanding is, if someone works six hours or more, they have to take a thirty-minute lunch break prior to the end of the sixth hour. So, if we're, we're saying, hey, you have to take a lunch break if you're here for more than six hours. They actually have to take it before the end of the sixth hour to be in compliance for us with whole. So meaning someone can't say, hey, I'm going to work eight hours and just take my lunch break at the end of the day and get out of here half hour early. Can't do that, you got to take it by the, before the end of the sixth hour that you work. And we're not making definitive note of that.
No, because it's not, it's a policy.
Right, but it's what goalie requires.
And this is what, what came to the list.
I understand, I'm just down to what Bureau of Labor and Industry says, that must.
Well. So, I know we don't have any staff that do that, that they do take their lunch breaks during the day.
Okay.
Um, but I can certainly check.
I know, yeah, I'm just, just wanted to point it out.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'm not done yet. And I don't know, oh, this one's page forty-nine.
Stay up on my.
Just a few minutes. How long did it take you, Ruth? It took me just a few minutes. Are you on the one that says whistle blowers?
Yes.
Okay, whistle blowers, I don't care about that part, below it is workers' comp. It's actually workers S apostrophe, not apostrophe S. I know I'm nitpicking there, but in every one of, in that, I highlighted them, there's a bunch of them in that section. It's actually S apostrophe, it's all workers' compensation, not one worker's compensation, it's plural, not singular. I know I'm splitting there, but I apologize.
Okay, it's all good.
I'm sure these guys will copy that.
Somebody's on workers.
And this, right, this is a second book that has been just, I mean, year after year after year.
Yeah, I understand.
And there were errors that I found, I'm like, oh my gosh, how can it just set last year?
In all fairness, I haven't mentioned it in prior years, it's got a.
So you just let it go, or, oh my gosh? Thank you.
All right, that's all I got, I'm done, that's it.
Okay, I will check on the other things. And if I'm able to make those changes, absolutely.
Just suggestions.
Definitely.
Next is third trimester employee recognition.
Okay.
So we go with third trimester.
Mr. Drell, third trimester employee recognition.
Gotcha, so, at each trimester, as we've talked about, this is the last trimester, you have folks from each building. It also does include once a year, it's not as many people at the alternative school. We do also have the alternative school as well. I would like you now to see the names of people, what they do, how they do it, again. Our administrators select, and they get those names into, it's going to be Lisa and Jen, for next month. We get the, the process, we send, we put a thank you on behalf of you guys and myself, and a little gift card to go with for your outstanding work, and we publish that. How we doing? Questions?
I think that's a very nice thing to do, a public condition.
Yep.
Okay, moving on, six point sixty, August board training, four thirty to seven, update.
Next board meeting, which I think is August.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's right, sure. It's just the point.
It's, it's August eighth, Darren.
Yeah.
Four thirty to seven.
Well, yeah, I see it in here, but I was wondering if it's actually four to seven, I'll look into it.
Okay, we'll let you know.
Okay.
Which means that also we'll have there as well, we'll reach out to you, so, yeah. We will have it here, and the training, then we'll move from that over to the parade. So again, we haven't done OSBA board training for four years.
Right.
And it's just a matter of them going through a process that allows you guys to ask a number of questions. How does this board process work? What is my job, how does this work, how do you manage questions from the audience, that kind of thing. With two, with one brand new board member, one year in, and then we have, like I said, I don't think we've had that since.
Yeah.
Friends are really excited.
I love it.
Get some apostrophe S.
That's right, with, if I could get the agenda ahead of time, pre-over.
I'm sure you'll be able to ask OSBA's questions.
Figure it out ourselves. Okay, anything else on that? Seven point O, trouble in my mind.
I don't think.
No, you don't have to comment with it. Okay. You don't have to comment with it, so we can break into resolution. We have done nine A, nine B. Nine C, resolution regarding new hire recommendations.
I'll, I'll start, Ruth, is that okay?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Yes.
You resolve Cascade Board of Education moves to approve the new higher recommendations of Zach Mencer, Onslow principal, Jacob Sutherby, special education teacher, district rep. Here, a special education teacher as recommended by the administration.
Okay, so it moved in second to approve the new hires as listed. Those aros in favor, say by by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Nine D, resolution regarding overnight trip request. Yet resolved the Cascade Board of Education moves to approve overnight trip requests for National Honor Society to travel to Seattle, Washington, October fourteenth through seventeen, two thousand twenty-two. So it moved in second to approve the overnight trip request for National Honor Society to travel to Seattle, Washington, on October fourteenth through seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two. Aros in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Nine point E, resolution regarding establishment of regular monthly board meeting date, time, and place.
Uh, you recall Cascade Board of Education results to establish. Monthly meet, excuse me, my, I can't get my screen enlarged, I'm having a. Yet resolved the Cascade School Board of Education moves to establish monthly meeting dates for the second Monday of the month, and preserve the fourth Monday of the month if needed at the time of seven PM effective at the next scheduled meeting.
Needed at the time of seven PM, speculative next scheduled meeting, aros in favor, say by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Nine F, resolution regarding bonded employees.
You resolve Cascade Board of Education moves to maintain crime limits of all employees at five hundred thousand dollars, including employee dishonesty and faithful performance meeting statutory bonding requirements.
Removed in second to maintain crime limits for all employees at five hundred thousand dollars, including employee dishonesty and faithful performance meeting statutory bonding requirements. Aros in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Carrie?
Yes.
Can I just, in a period, this, these are actually number eight. I, I maintain to be at the last minute.
Okay. So, I see that on here now, sorry.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Okay, eight G. Resolution regarding designate for chief administrator, clerk, budget officer, and deputy clerk, and authorize use of facsimile signature for district checks. Yet resolved the Cascade Board of Education moves to appoint director of the chief administrator, clerk, and the budget officer for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Further to appoint Scott Piller as deputy clerk, and operates both superintendent and deputy clerk, to sign or use facsimile signature for checks for legally obtained school expenses. It's been moved in second to appoint Claire Carroll as chief administrator, clerk, and budget officer for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Further to appoint Scott Piller as deputy clerk, and operates both superintendent and deputy clerk to sign or use facsimile signature for checks for legally obtained school expenses. Aros in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Eight H, resolution regarding designation, designate for custodian of funds.
Yet resolved Cascade Board of Education. Order of second, custodian of funds. Invest in accordance. Invest in accordance with ORS two ninety-five point one six five for two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three.
So moved and seconded. ORS two ninety-five point one six five for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Eight point, eight point I, resolution regarding designate for labor negotiations.
Yet resolved Cascade Board of Education moves to designate superintendent to conduct labor negotiations.
Second. So moved and seconded to designate the superintendent to conduct labor negotiations, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Eight J, resolution regarding legal counsel. Yet resolved Cascade Board of Education moves to let legal services of WESD, Garrett Keeman, Robertson, Paulus Jennings and Comstock PC firm. Legal services of OSBA and the Hungerford Law Firm for legal counsel for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Okay, so moved and seconded to select legal services of WESD, Garrett Keeman, Robertson, Paulus Jennings and Comstock PC firm. Legal services of OSBA and the Hungerford Law Firm for legal counsel for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Eight K, resolution regarding depositories of funds.
Yet resolved Cascade Board of Education moves to designate US Bank, Columbia Bank, Wells Fargo, Riverview Community Bank, Max Credit Union, and Oregon State Treasury as depositories for district funds.
The move and seconded to designate US Bank, Columbia Bank, Wells Fargo, Riverview Community Bank, Max Credit Union, Oregon State Treasury as depositories for district funds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Eight point L, resolution regarding board committee appointments.
Yet resolved Cascade Board of Education moves to approve the appointment of the following board members as representatives of the following committees. CEA is Brett Stiegel and Aaron Lee. OSBA is Ruth Stevens and John Ramey.
Second. Been moved and seconded to approve the appointment of the following board members as representatives of the following committees. CEA Brett Stiegel and Aaron Lee. OSBA Ruth Stevens and John Ramey. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Eight point M, resolution regarding agent of record. Yet resolved Cascade Board of Education moves to accept Assured Partners Incorporated as the agent of record for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So moved and seconded to accept Assured Partners Inc. as the agent of record for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Eight point N, resolution regarding building buyer liability auto and workers' comp insurance for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three.
Yet resolved Cascade Board of Education moves to accept the renewal proposals from Special District Association of Oregon. PACE programs for the property liability auto insurance and safe corporation for workers' compensation, both brokered by Assured Partners Incorporated.
Second. So moved and seconded. To accept the renewal proposals for the Special District Association of Oregon PACE program for the property liability auto insurance and safe corporation for workers' compensation, both brokered by Assured Partners Inc. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Nine point O, resolution, eight point O. Resolution regarding daily rate of pay for certified substitutes.
Yet resolved Cascade Board of Education moves to establish daily rate of pay for certified substitutes at two hundred fifty dollars and seven cents.
Is there a second? Second. Yet resolved Cascade Board of Education moves to establish the daily rate of pay for certified substitutes at two hundred, two fifty, two hundred and fifty dollars and seven cents. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay. Nine point O is future agenda items.
Go ahead. Cheryl has them.
Cheryl has them, perfect. So, um, set goals for next year, safety report in the fall, and safety presentation after the convention. Set goals for next year, FFA, and a safety report in the fall, safety report. Okay. And when do we, when do we have to set our goals? August, September?
August and November, September. We've done the chicken, the egg thing with this board, when you guys set goals. What we need to work on from where at our.
I was just going to say, you're going to be at a retreat next month.
Come to you guys to talk about what we talked about.
Um, I think that's a great idea, that way we have an idea to get.
Can I introduce Mr. Grill one last thing? At the Marion County Fair last, just this past week, Mr. Grill did a great job with the FFA kids. I'll say it back to this. Absolutely. Kids be great, Mr. Grill was all over the place, and I talked to him a number of times, he did that, so just wanted to mention that, me, thank you.
Appreciate you letting me know. The other thing I would say is in November, in November, at the West DA State Conference, he's going to be available finally again. He will get more information in the past year, for those of you that can make it, it'd be great for us to have that conversation, so I hope that's.
Okay. I wanted to say a couple things, I don't know the Cheryl's last name, but I just wanted to say thank you so much from all of us, because. I don't know at times what I would have done, I would call her if just showing her to me, just about silly stuff, later on I realize, you know, but she always handled it so beautifully, and I just appreciate it so much. And I'm still thanking her every day. And I also wanted to say to Brett that I, I wanted to thank him and just acknowledge what a great sharing he's been, and all the stuff that this board has been through, and how we handled it so professionally and with grace, and I just have been so impressed with him.
Very kind of you to say, it wasn't always grace when I talk to Mr. Grill privately, but I.
We were a little beat up last year, and you did such a great job.
Thank you, guys.
I wanted to thank you.
Well, I appreciate that, because actually, as you can tell, I was going to say.
Right there, too.
Wanted to, maybe I also want to say anything before I say something.
I just think it's been a wonderful work experience with Cheryl. And it's not really a work experience, because like she said, we're kind of kids, and I hope you filled Lisa in and got notes on all this, how we act and what we do. I haven't yet, and I have to work with Lisa yet, it's perfect. I can warn her. Yeah, and Brett's a pretty hard actor to follow, so I'm going to have to get my, up my game a little bit, so.
Well, I do appreciate Cheryl, you know, this is here, I'm starting my fifteenth year, I've only had Cheryl as secretary, as secretary assistant. Now, as my department, it's been, I think, I think, I think, I think, you know, after four or five years. There were times when we were working on things, but then you have to say to each other, we were frustrated with each other, we didn't talk about that either, there were times when we'd laugh out loud. And that just appreciates, directions, she's somebody that sees and knows. Actually, there now. And that is something, the upside is, you have somebody that's heard and watched. And I always remarked way back when I was sort of there that I was state of record. Feel like I couldn't have treated better or helped, because for the first couple of years, I was kind of in your guys' boat, I don't know what I don't know. Cheryl really helped out, and there are times, even in the last few years, where she's like, you know what, dang it, speak up, say something, you know, get after it. I know you're around, I know you'll be over there, and I know you'll still give me.
Absolutely. That doesn't change. No, it doesn't. You'll probably get.
I'm okay with that. That's all I got.
Anything else? I know, we're losing Madeline. Cheryl, what the heck?
But I, I have to say, I'm very excited about my new position.
And I am too.
And I can't wait.
It'll be awesome. Okay, I'm going to adjourn the meeting at what, eight fourteen? Thank you very much, everyone, for coming, and have a safe ride home.
I was going to say right afterwards, John, I apologize, your first meeting was like this.
Yeah, I'm getting lost.
This is your first meeting. I can't remember exactly how that happened, but, yeah. So it's four hundred people sitting on stage.